Good evening, everyone. Our call, our meeting's on order. Hearing council chambers at 6:00 P.M. Roll call, please. Other person, Murphy.
Present.
Macias. Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
We don't have any remote electronic attendance. So we move to public comment. Is there any for us? Okay, I do believe we have an emailed public comment that the clerk will read. Council members, I appreciate your attention to Agenda Item 20.3 and would like to offer additional context regarding the sidewalk requirement for my property on 14th Street Moline. This section of 14th Street is unique. There are no existing sidewalks in front of any homes, nor is the street constructed to support them. The absence of curbs, gutters, or a defined edge means the sidewalk has no natural starting or ending point. The street is finished with a seal coat crowned in the center and tapering to gravel at the edges, which blends directly into the front yards. Installing a sidewalk here would introduce significant risks and complications. Snow removal relies on the gravel shoulders and portions of the yards to clear enough space for vehicles. A sidewalk would be exposed to damage from plows, requiring drivers to remember its location and navigate around abrupt concrete ends that do not align with the street's natural grade. This threatens the sidewalk's integrity and creates a safety hazard for city equipment and personnel. Importantly, there is no precedent for sidewalks in this area. Two weeks ago, a neighbor two houses south installed a new driveway without any sidewalk requirement. My request is not for a variance in a neighborhood where sidewalks are standard, but for consideration in a location where they have never existed. On a personal note, I am a lifelong member of the Moline community, committed to its growth and improvement. For 13 years, I have served a critical role for one of Moline's most successful youth sports programs, Moline Little Lake. By choosing to invest in and rebuild the most neglected property on the stretch of 14th Street, I am enhancing my home and contributing to the neighborhood's overall value and the city's tax base. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration, Scott Sheddick. Thank you very much. And with no other public comment, we move to board appointments. Excuse me. These are reappointments of Jeff Dizmer, Daniel Otten, and Lucy Van Heck to the Public Art Commission for two-year terms to expire September 30th, 2027. Any questions? Hearing none, we move to our presentation, Shine on Moline Community Solar Project. Simple. Evening, everybody. We're pleased to have Sean Ajazi with us. He's the Vice President of Progressive Business Solutions. He has extensive experience in solar energy development and is here to present an overview of our proposed community solar farm project. Sean has worked on numerous renewable energy initiatives focusing on sustainable community-centered solutions that maximize environmental and economic benefits. Today, he will walk us through the project's scope, potential impacts, and opportunities for the city and its residents. Please welcome Sean and Jeff.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Murphy. Good evening. After a year looking forward to this opportunity, I'm here to talk about the community solar land lease program for the city of Moline. We competitively bid out multiple projects on city staff, kind of going through a holistic overview of available city properties. We really focused on making sure that the solar companies and developers were really registered with the state of Illinois, and only operating and engineering these community solar fields. And they had a land lease payment, no out-of-pocket expense, to the city of Moline. The program is to be administered under the Illinois Shine Community Solar Program, and that program is a beneficial program to help drive down costs for subscription availability by participating under the program. Typically, the program's saving mechanisms by subscribing are 10% to 15% off of the utility price when you pay. We performed a due diligence opportunity for the proposed sites. The big question is really Mid-American infrastructure. What is available? I know staff did do some initial due diligence with Mid-American and allowed us to really hone in on the project's final scope, which we are presenting today to the city. We wanted to make sure that, you know, they have strict compliance to surveying, engineering, and designing of the project, because each one of the parcels had different nuances. And we wanted to really make sure that future expansion or additional projects down the road, if infrastructure is available, that there would be adequate space outside of what's currently available with Mid-American. We looked at initial lease options for periods if you selected the developer would be from three to five years. And then the contract term would be for an initial term of 25 years all the way up to 40 years, and the city would get lease payment with an annual escalator. The city would get paid on an annual basis, and that would be the funding mechanism back to the city outside of any subscription allocation that the city would take advantage of by subscribing for municipal properties. We also wanted to make sure that we looked at large-scale developers, right? Because we wanted to ensure that we went out to a broad spectrum of community solar, not only locally, but also on a national level. Proposals were sent out to four licensed Illinois solar energy developers. We received interest and questions from eight initial developer respondents. They had some questions about, you know, what type of property it was, you know, and a lot of different variables. We received four proposals from three qualified bidders. Those bidders were Community Power Group, Injunta Solar, and New Carbon Beats. All of those are registered with the state of Illinois, and we analyzed the core proposals for a best case and, I'm sorry, a base case and a best-case scenario. So the minimum of five megawatt hours, which is the proposed project, all the way up to 40 megawatts, which would be in all of the projects as a whole. So we looked at all the scenarios with staff with proposals. What we received is we received lease rates, annual lease rates between $1,200 and $2,500, and an annual escalator from 1% to 2% for you. So pretty common in the community solar realm, you know, based on the projects that we've seen. And then we also looked at what their commitment was for Mid-American's infrastructure. Are they going to commit to applying dollars to any upgrades that are needed to the utility infrastructure that is in place? Based on the proposals that were reviewed by the city of Moline staff and our company, we are recommending that the city move forward with Community Power Group. They are out of Maryland. They have a national footprint. They actually have done a project in the city of Galesburg as much as others. There is a brief overview of the company in here. We are looking at the Bowie property, and it says two parcels. We initially looked at the two parcels, but we really kind of focused on the middle parcel of that property and brought the 25-acre site to that specific location for future expansion and stuff for that. The annual lease payment would be $2,000 per acre with a 2% annual escalator. The annual lease payment for the city would be $50,000. Over 20 years, it would be a payment total of $1,240,868. And then a 40-year lease payment total would be just a little bit over $3 million, $3,020,900. In addition, we wanted to ensure that ground covering underneath was also taken care of, right? We didn't want an ISO or anything else. So we looked at agricultural tacks, which was one of the proposals that was submitted, as well as a native pollinator, which would support, you know, pollination, bee, butterfly, potential habitats, as well as a potential bee habitat itself on the property, kind of going with the Bee City, the city of Moline, as a beautiful name. There was some talk, how's it going to mow down, potentially look at sheep breeding as well, but those will be conversations as we get further along the process if the developer is selected. The gaming fence, typically, the community solar developers have a gaming fence, so small game can pass by, so it won't be a chain link fence or anything else to that effect. So it's more common approach to ensure, you know, animals can come to the study. Here is the property that we kind of honed in on. We're looking right here in the middle section. If you see on the right here, the parcel is kind of into the second parcel. We have moved that up on the final draft that would be included in any contract, so it'll be specifically that 25 acres for the lease for that property. What I did is I put together revenue summary, so this kind of gets you by year, what the income will be for the city. This gives you the 2% escalation factor, and the average per acre is around $75,000 per year when you look at it over 40 years. Again, first initial 20 years, and then the contract. Information about Community Power Group, Community Power Group, again, is out of Maryland. They've done projects in Virginia, Delaware, Connecticut, New York, Illinois, Wisconsin. Most recently, they did eight megawatts for the city of Galesburg, and they've done a lot of stuff with the city of Baltimore and, you know, landfills and stuff like that. So they're very common with the site requirements of what that land is. They will be very comfortable with putting solar on that. There are some site risks. You know, it's a big project. There's a lot of changing with incentives and structures on a federal level. The Illinois Shine's program, there's limited recapacity in the group A, which is the Illinois Shine's program for Mid-American. It's competitive block allocations. We will have to work hand-in-hand with Mid-American to ensure that the project, you know, adequate capacity and cost and everything else to that effect. So Mid-American will need to be a partner on this project because this will be one of the first community solar projects in Mid-American service territory. So that is another, you know, key focus with this project to ensure that we have it. Utility building credit, want to make sure that Mid-American has the ability to bill it and credit it properly. And the interconnection upgrades, with any large-scale solar project, making sure there's sufficient infrastructure. I think we do have a commitment or we do have information from Mid-American that five megawatts is available, so we feel very comfortable with this project. Federal incentive deadlines, under the new regulate, do one big beautiful bill in executive orders. Construction must start by July 4th. There also are state harbor provisions where at least 5% of the project needs to be state harbor or purchased for the project ahead of time to meet the specific requirements on the taxes. The construction of the project needs to be completed by December 31st of 2027. If you don't meet certain provisions, then 30% tax credit is lost, and that changes the whole economics of the project with lease payments and everything else to that effect. There is transferability. Both Community Power Group own this, fully operated over 40 years. We want to make sure that if they do transfer this to another entity, that the city is protected and everything else to that effect. Those are completely contemplated, we need agreement. And then, you know, there's some things with writ backlog constraints in Illinois and my zone. So those are really the concerns, but those are everything as we work out after contract signing, final engineering, single-line diagram, surveying, that all kind of takes us through this whole map. We anticipate, you know, 12 to 18 months is a realistic target for this project. Could be a little bit longer, but that's really what our timeline is to meet the incentive levels. Contractual equipments, we want to actively secure site development for the project. Hosting map, but available on the hosting site. Pre-applications to Mid-American, we want to submit interconnection applications to ensure what their costs are. We want to submit ADP applications, what the construction start is, work with the city to ensure we're meeting the milestones that are set forward. Ensure that there's an option period in the contract, a construction payment during the construction time period, and then your annual lease payment will start. Mid-American line extensions, we want to ensure what Mid-American's responsibilities are, their upgrades if there's any. And then, you know, subscription priorities, city of Moline facilities, residents of Moline, and how that will impact and what the savings mechanisms are. Next, I'm sure really to, you know, finalize what the board would like to move forward with and kind of get the contract over to for legal review and bring that board back to be approved at future meeting, and then we can set the milestones forward for the project. So with that, I will open it for any questions.
I have a quick one, and then I can turn to the council. Who is the collaborator with Galesburg? Is it Mid-American or ComEd?
Galesburg is ComEd, so it's a different facility.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, I, the leasing component, I get. Can you get into a little more simpler explanation of how it works with like the rate components and how that impacts and where that turns out? I understand that it likely can't be presented with like you will get X dollars back. I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding how that process works.
Great question. So on the subscription allocation, the savings is what you're looking to or referring to?
Yes.
You have to think of it as you have a $100 charge on your bill at, let's say, 10 cents. Let's just say that's the number. You get a credit of $100 on your bill, you pay $90. Your savings is $10. So on your bill, you'll have the full value of the credit, and then you'll have a charge for the 10% less, and then that differential is the savings. So you'll always be cash ahead because the 100% of the credit is placed at the utility points on the bill.
And so that's applying to the city bill? And like where is it applying? How is that being?
It'll be applied to the residential bills for the residents that subscribe to the field, and then the city, if the city subscribes to the field, which I think that's the intent, it'll be applied to the city. So it'll be on the bills as a charge and a credit to the city.
And what are the requirements for registering typically?
Yeah, with that, you want to have a certain amount of percentages for residential to meet certain requirements that you can see. Like X percent needs to be residential, X percent may need to be low income, X percent can be large, municipal, governmental, factory, stuff like that.
But I mean, is it just redefine the geography of who's eligible? Is that?
They will go out and solicit to Mid-American service customers to fill the subscription of about 25, 30 million megawatts. So that's how they will feel.
So, and Mid-American has to do that portion of it?
Community Power Group.
Community Power Group, okay. Thank you.
Well, there's yes, Mr. Timian.
So the reason that this is so confusing is because the majority of our conversations about this have been us building everything, getting a loan, paying back the loan, working the economics of that. The lease model is, you know, I'm looking at $50,000 a year. That's not like a whole lot of money. But can you explain how so they can, consumers can subscribe to using the service? And that, does that cost, or is that just an opt-in?
It's an opt-in.
So they opt in, and then they save money on the bill?
10% to 15% is still.
And the city has the option of skimming some off the top of that or not?
The city has the ability to subscribe to the facility as well.
Okay.
So it'll be residents or city of Moline as well as commercial customers and city owned.
The city-owned properties. So we save the taxpayers also by reducing our expenses, which is.
Correct. Rather than the city actually indebted itself for $40 million to build the project or $20 million, whatever, depending on the size of the project, we're not the owner and the operator. We're the leaseholder of the land, and then we benefit from the power generated. We distribute that to the community as a whole.
Understood.
Ms. Murphy?
So I'm not clear on this. So you're saying there's no cost to the resident for the initial startup, for the equipment or anything? That's all on the?
The Community Power Group is up front in the capital for the project.
Okay.
They're paying the city at least, so there's zero out-of-pocket expense for the city of Moline. You're just leasing that property for potentially 40 years with the commercial experience.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
And so the company operating the facility, they're making their money because they're selling more to Mid-American than they're offering back to us as a discount, right? That's the business model?
They're making their money on the tax credit, SRECs and stuff to that effect, and they have ongoing revenue for the subscriptions because they're charging for the 90 cents on the dollar fees.
Right, so it's like we're getting 10% to 15%, but truthfully, the break is like 20% to 25% or something. By example, I'm not.
Yeah, it's really, you have to look at it as it's not going to be 10% of the bills, it's 10% of your subscribed. So think of it like a Groupon. You're subscribing to a Groupon at a discounted price. You get the discount on your bill, and you're paying the discounted price. So like, if I go to Costco and I get a Disney gift card, normally $200, right now I think they got it at $160, and you go buy the Disney gift card for your trip. So I'm getting a $200 gift card, but I'm only paying $160. That's the subscription, that's how you get it.
Right.
Yes, Mr. Tim.
Last question. In here, it says solar company to assume tax obligation. Can you explain that? Because this, this is a city-owned property that we're leasing, so is there a tax obligation?
Yeah, any changes to the property's tax as what it is today, they will be obligated to obey.
I don't know who you're looking at.
Can we transfer to someone and then? All right. That's just, so that's just part of the contract?
It's part of the contract, yes. They're responsible. Because there could be future legislation down the road that's to be contemplated, so if there's any changes, they're responsible for any changes to the tax.
Okay.
And this is the plan that the administration is recommending we go with, as well as what your recommendations? Is that correct?
Yes, this is a recommendation that both Sean and the staff agreed to. We think this is the right way to go. It limits the size of the field based on a limited capacity of Mid-American. It tucks it away in a very specific location, on the Bowie Farm. As you know, the property to the north is a sloped woodland going down to the roadway to the north, and then to the south, future expansion of the solar field could occur on the southernmost lot, doubling it in size and benefit to the community at some future point when Mid-American is prepared to offer five additional or more megawatts.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
And right now, the city's used to that farm is yard waste, right?
It's just, it's just being farmed.
Oh, it's just being farmed, that's right.
It's been tillable land since we acquired it, actually, some, I don't know, 25, 30 years ago. So we have a land lease there, and it's farmed.
Would we be able, so will the bottom half remain?
We would continue to lease that to the farmer, and the north half would be, would be leased to the power, this power company, and then access to it would come off of, I believe, that 72nd Street, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
And we would, we would gain access from there to the site there by not disturbing any of the property on the south.
You could farm it until we start construction, so we still have farm advantage for that period.
Correct.
Mr. Tim.
Actual last question.
Actual.
Has, has there been any calculations or projections of how much money this would save Moline residents as a whole? Just a number.
We have not contemplated that, but we can provide that.
I think that would be really, really, I mean, it's just, it's a good talking point.
Bringing that back with, when the agreement comes to.
Yeah.
Can we bring the lease back or approval?
We can base it off the kilowatt hours.
Yeah. Average usage.
Yeah.
Be a great story for the press.
I'm, I'm particularly thankful that you found a way to include some other positive use of the land. Since we couldn't do agricultural tacks, at least we can do conservation, pollination.
Maybe able to incorporate sheep or.
Yeah.
Like economies, so, you know, maybe still get that agricultural tacks designation set out of the realm.
We're not done yet.
Just making the most use of the land seems much, and having it have an impact on the residents seems much better than just letting it sit there. Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much. You guys have a great evening.
Thank you, Sean.
Under questions on the agenda next, we do have in regard to Item 21.1 on the council agenda. The agenda for this meeting was posted on Friday, October 17th, which was prior to the October 18th budget work session. The agenda says, quote, "Item approval subject to 10/18/25 budget work session," end quote. Although the agenda wording remains the same, the recommended dollar amount has changed due to action that was taken at the October 18 budget work session meeting. Total amount as listed on the posted agenda is $17,685,290. The updated amount, which was determined by council on October 18th, is $17,346,149. Due to state statute 35 LCS 200 slash 18 to 60, approval must not be less than 20 days prior to the adoption of its levy. Therefore, this item will come back to council for final reading at the November 18 council meeting. Any questions? Okay. So with that, we will move to our committee of the whole agenda items, 8.1. A resolution approving change order number one, and final was Stitcher Construction, Inc. for project number 1488, 2025, Seal Coat Ditch Restoration for the amount of $11,038.78. Mr. Vitas?
Yes, very straightforward item. Mayor and council and staff is recommending approval with change order number one, and final to Stitcher Construction, Inc. in the amount of $11,038.78.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.2, a resolution authorizing the Director of Utilities with the concurrence of the Director of Finance and the City Administrator to approve change orders for the South Slope Wastewater Reclamation Facility project in a total amount not to exceed $3,415,860, the amount of contingency funding previously budgeted for this project with ratification by the city council afterward. Mr. Vitas?
Happy to speak on this issue as well, and be backed up by our city attorney, but what we are looking for is authorization that exceeds the purchasing policy as it was adopted in code. What we're doing is we're looking to put checks and balances in place that would require not only the Director of Utilities, but the Finance Director in my office to review and approve change orders as they happen during the course of the project so as not to delay construction. And we're recommending approval of this request. We would follow a similar procedure for the central fire station or any other major project that would come forward.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion? Mr. Schmidt?
So the purpose and the reasoning all makes sense, and then, so then a change order is approved by the council after the fact?
Yes, ultimately, you will have final approval on expenditures.
And?
But this way, these approvals are happening as they take place rather than letting it compile and build up and then approve it at the end. Project is just too large to manage otherwise.
And, and that makes sense. Obviously, my, the one balance against that is we don't want it to be like we racked up $2 million change orders in the first month before we've, or first few months before we've heard about it, right?
Right.
Like, this just says ratification by the city council afterward. Is there a legal requirement for how soon afterward would be, or is this something we should be defining?
The reason that the ratification is included, there is already in your purchasing policy authorization for change orders to sometimes be done when they're of a certain dollar amount, and I don't remember it offhand, where it would come to you for ratification afterwards. And so in drafting this particular provision, I followed basically the same setup that the purchasing ordinance already had for certain high-dollar expenditures on change orders. There is no necessity for it to come back to you for ratification. If you authorize it in advance, then the full $3 million, et cetera, could be authorized. That particular dollar amount, there is a reason that it's limited to that. That is the contingency funding. If it goes above that number, then you actually will have to amend your budget in order to allow any further expenditures, so.
Yeah, so it's not a blank check.
That's a hard number.
It's not a blank check of, of authorization. It's up to this amount. And I would venture to guess that any administrator approving things that went past the budget would probably be out of a job very quickly.
Not going to happen on my watch.
Guess, Mr. Schmidt?
So I guess, I understand the total cap. Like I said, my question is, what's the notification along the way? Because by your most recent description, it would say, we don't find out what the change orders are until we've reached $3.4 million.
Okay, you, every month, you will, at least monthly, if not every single meeting, you will be receiving updates like you do for all capital projects. So you'll, you'll be informed, and if it reaches an amount that you actually have to take some ratification action, basically, if you, if you get it up above the amount that can be done under the regular purchasing ordinance, $100,000, that's going to have to be ratified, as I interpret this particular provision. And maybe I didn't make that clear enough when I drafted it.
And that comes back to my, my question was, what is the time parameter that's required? Or does bringing it back a year later count as bringing it back afterward?
For, for every time that. For, for every time that they go above 100,000, there will be at least notification to you so that you can take action contrary to that. If you believe that they've exceeded their authority, they shouldn't have done whatever action, the council could take action to rescind whatever it is that's been done.
On what timeline? My question is only about timeline.
Every month, you would be notified of what's happening, at least every month, if not every single meeting.
And where is that, where am I finding that legal statement of fact? Like, like, it is not clear in the ordinance we're passing this evening, so where is that coming from, that monthly?
That actually, it's my understanding, is already standing procedure with regards to all of the capital improvements. That you, you receive at least a monthly report as to all capital improvement projects.
So you're saying the only mechanism is the monthly status and information report? As opposed to how we usually see budgeted items come through as payments on the consent agenda or on the regular, on the regular meeting? You know what I'm talking about, how?
Yeah, I, see, the thing is, I, I don't handle those reports. I was informed of how they typically work.
Well, Bob needs to answer them.
And so.
Let me ask, let me ask a question. How often would you like to know? Because I'll be honest with you, we can give you a blow-by-blow of every drawdown against this project, and I think that's what you're looking for. And if you're looking for that, it will show the normal drawdowns based upon labor charges and material costs that are incurred. But then if there are change orders requested by the contractor, because that's who's going to make those requests, and preferably before they perform the work, they will coordinate that through both Laura's office as well as through Troy Stinson's office with Strand. And then those will be reviewed. If it's a legitimate change order request, then it will go through that standard, you know, approval process before any payment could be released. And Carol's not going to pay anybody unless she sees my signature, I can tell you that. I mean, we have a very rigid system when it comes to all capital improvement projects. So, we're happy to report as frequently or as less frequently as you like.
And I'm, I'm fine with.
This just gives us the ability to work through little change orders as they happen. Otherwise, if you have a $10,000 change order, you know, I don't want the project to stop for $10,000 change order while we wait for ratification and approval at council every two weeks. That's not how major capital improvements are done, not like that one.
My concern is when it exceeds the administrator's authority, like I said, it just, I'm not seeing a timeframe. And if, if a huge change order comes through, I want to ensure that there's a regular timeframe where notified.
No, that would, that would impact the project budget, and obviously, we'd want to let you know.
And I, I, I agree it's obvious, but I'd also like it codified.
Then you should make, make an amendment that you have amendment wording.
Well, I'm trying to understand if there are any.
There is a lot of wants to speak, so.
If, if I may as well, change orders are, are hard to predict, and in some respects, that's good, we don't want to see too many. But those could come once a month, they could come in a couple of months. What this is allowing us to do is in the event we have a change order that is exceeding our purchasing policy 100,000, which reasonably could happen on a project of this size and scale. We want to make sure we're keeping the contractor moving. We don't want to hold him up on days of construction, nor do we want to delay anything on ordering something if they need it. We want to make sure that we're going through all the checks and balances that are going through authorities with, as mentioned, myself, with Strand and associates. And then once we have reviewed that and we feel it's a reasonable request, then obviously, that will be brought before Carol and Bob. Once it comes back to council, that can be up to 30 days or 45. And why I say that to you is, sometimes contractors, if it's a large enough one, they're only going to bill us once a month. So on these change orders, they're going to come on the pay application, and that's when we're going to receive it. So it could be, at the end of one month, we're not going to see it until the next payoff. So I just want to make sure we're not setting up some things that's going to put staff in a predicament where we might not be every, have every 10 or 15 days. It could reasonably be a month later, depending on, up to 45 or 60 days, depending on how the payoff occurs. The, the change order might be one large change order, or I've seen in previous construction projects, it might be multiple change orders collectively exceeding 100,000, but they don't put the paperwork in for 30 days. Contractor's going to be very motivated to get their payment and their bills paid. So, I, I would suggest, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry.
What I would suggest is reasonably and timely as possible. That, that shows that there is a time of essence, but I just can be reluctant to put an exact.
That, that's helpful for us to understand why there is no timeframe in here, but it clarifies it, I, I think.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Murphy?
She is correct, I worked for General Electric out of Chicago with their regional office in accounting, and I worked with Comet at the nuclear power, and we did all the nuclear outages, and I did the billing. And change orders happen right on the spot, and if you don't react and you delay the project, you're going to end up costing yourself more money. But anything that we had that was over a certain amount, it went to the finance department and would be the city administrator. And if it's something that is that serious, I'm sure he would call at a special meeting or a telephone meeting or something to get our approval. But we can't, they can't wait for us to have the next meeting or the next meeting. Not on a project of 138 million dollars.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
And I have no problem with what we're trying to do. My only point in the protection of this council is ensuring that once it has been approved, there is a timely notification. Because this doesn't call, this does not even require a timely notification, it simply requires a notification. That's the only part I'm, I'm having any issue with. And I was hesitant to just start throwing out language without additional context of what that is. But if this.
Honorable person Schmidt, if I, if I could, the ratification, we could require that the ratification occur within 30 days of the action by the city administrator, the Director of Finance and the Director of Utilities, that they get that in front of the council within a 30-day period after they've taken such action so that any ratification can be done at that point. Now, obviously, if it's within their regular spending authority, they would simply inform you that it occurred. There wouldn't be ratification for that. But if it exceeds their regular authority, then I think we could do it. I, I can make an amendment to this for when it comes forward for your, your first reading. Actually, we had it happening tonight, didn't we?
Yeah, I think it's safer to have.
If you give me a little bit of time, I can come up with an amendment to it, and, and we can change it right now. Just give me a few moments.
Can I make a suggestion? Wouldn't it be right here with ratification by the City Council within 30 days of action by administrators?
Yeah, that's.
I know you want to be sure that that's right, but is that the right place?
I wanted to take a second to look it over and make sure that that's sufficient. It sounded good when I was saying it. I just want to be sure that it'll work.
There you go.
We'll give you a minute or two. And, and your honor?
Yes. I, I might also suggest with that 30 days, that what I've seen done in the past is to just keep a running total up to that amount
Yes.
of the contingency. And then you would see on that monthly basis, you know, what's growing, growing, and then when we get to that cap.
And you would put that in this monthly status and information report?
Yes.
Okay. That's helpful, I'm glad we have that mechanism, actually.
Can I be good with ratification of a whole bunch of them at once? I mean, that, I am not trying to interfere with the process here, it's just adding that, making sure.
You want the assurances.
And I, I believe you're going to bring it forward to us, but I just, when someone asks me, did you sign the check for $3.4 million without any timeline on it, I don't want to have to say yes.
Okay. All right.
I think he's writing it out.
All right, although my, what I had said earlier sounded good to me and to you guys, it, in looking at the language, I don't think it would work. So what I'm going to propose is, after, with ratification by the City Council afterward, that you would amend it by adding an additional sentence, "All change orders above $100,000 will come to the City Council for ratification within 30 days of all necessary signatures." And the necessary signatures, of course, are the three individuals who are identified. If it went above 100,000, that would be beyond the authority that is within the, the purchasing ordinance. And so all of those would require a ratification. But they would be approved immediately with ratification afterwards, so there would be no slowdown with regards to any of the construction.
Up to the cap of the 3.415 million.
That's earlier in the motion, so.
And I have the language written down here that can be passed to the clerk in order to
Thank you.
make sure that it's appropriately recorded.
Maybe it should be passed to the person who hasn't yet amended it yet.
Your honor, I would like to propose an amendment.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
That directly after the word authorization in the, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, so we'll have to made through further City Council authorization, add the, the sentence, "All change orders above $100,000 will come to the City Council for ratification within 30 days of necessary signatures."
Is there a second?
Second.
That's Timian and Schmidt, discussion?
Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Atkins, did we place that in the wrong spot?
I'm sorry?
We put it under one of the whereas's as opposed to in the therefore.
If the movement in the second would agree to it being placed after afterward in the now ther, now therefore be it resolved section,
That's where it belongs.
then you can simply proceed with it being placed there.
So modified.
All right.
Okay. We have. They so modified.
I have to read this again, so I need to know
Yeah.
how to read it later.
Why don't you read it back so everybody's clear?
Well, I'm just going to read what Timian just said, because I don't know what that paragraph was.
Let me redo this, you need to amend the amendment, do make it formal, this is too informal, so that she can get the correct wording, so we can do it properly on the regular council meeting.
Do we want this back?
Do you need this back?
Probably. So can I withdraw and just start over, please?
Do we need any other kinds of motions or seconds to withdraw? Bill?
At, at this point, we have the motion on the floor with the.
I just amend the, just amend the amendment.
I mean.
Your honor, I would like to amend my motion to place the sentence, "All change orders above $100,000 will come to the City Council for ratification within 30 days of necessary signatures," after the sentence, after the very end of the bill?
Right.
Period.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we've got Schmidt on that second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? An amendment to the amendment passes, now we're to the amendment as amended. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment as amended?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now back to the motion as amended. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Timian?
I apologize, we do this sometimes.
Not that often, so.
About once a year, we step on our own feet, yeah, it's fun.
Okay. So, all in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. 8.3, a resolution authorizing the city attorney and other staff to notify DHC LLC that the city will not exercise its right of first refusal to purchase the Washington Square Apartments, 316 17th Street, Moline, Illinois, and allowing Renew Moline to proceed with its purchase of the property from DHC LLC without interference from the city. Mr. Vitas?
Sure, yes, mayor, happy to speak on this issue. And I know, I see Ms. Elias is also in the audience representing Renew Moline as the requestor. They are in the process of acquiring the Washington Square Apartments by authorization of their, their executive board and their board directors. And standing in between us, standing between them and this purchase is the city's right of first refusal dating back to 2019. Since the city has no intention of exercising that first refusal, we are looking for the council to go ahead and remove our position. As it said fairly, Mr. Attorney.
Oh.
Motion.
This, this situation isn't exactly what's called for under the right of first refusal. But this way, it actually speeds up the process, because otherwise, we would just sit waiting, or rather, Renew Moline would sit waiting for you to not take any action. So rather than waiting that full timeframe of, I think it was 90 days, this tells them immediately, you're not taking any action.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.4, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a redevelopment and economic incentive agreement between the City of Moline and Moline Dispatch Apartments LLC related to the TIP 15 Fifth Avenue redevelopment project area as amended. Mr. Parr?
This is to introduce ordinance for redevelopment and economic incentive agreement with Dispatch Apartments project. Moline, I, so I see it was the over, probably located at 17 Fifth Avenue, related in the Moline Dispatch Apartments redevelopment project. Project is contemplated at a, a separate 4D residential apartment, 2617 Studios, towards 200, 330, apartment spaces. But it's located in, I'd say, 15 Fifth Avenue, TIPS, inside that city. So, seeing not for negotiated terms of redevelopment agreement, so, uh, assessment of redevelopment. Apparently structured at 1.2 million, uh, in, uh, maximum, 924, plus 600, project apartments. So with this project, it's real about that, so, uh, in your head. Previous state city proved the inducer provision, um, on the 8th, 2512, the second inducer provision for, uh, this action.
Thank you.
If Mr. Silverman had anything to add? Did he cover everything, David?
Okay. I, I heard. I heard Mr. Timian, motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Finch? Discussion.
I just.
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say, I'm very impressed with the design. It really looks nice, it, it should bring a real upbeat tempo to downtown Moline.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Some of you know I've been going down history rabbit holes lately, and I brought a prop tonight. In the parking lot of the Dispatch Building, there used to be a YMCA. And I'm just glad that, and the YMCA historically also provided housing. It was kind of an SRO model where you could rent a room. And we're replacing what used to be housing with more housing. And so I'm just really glad to see it kind of come full circle here. It won't be occupying the same footprint, but it's adjacent to it. And I just think that it's wonderful to see us building housing downtown when there is such a need, and we're using every tool at our disposal to do it. I'm really, really grateful.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. All right, 9.1, 2024 to 2026 strategic plan dashboard fiscal year '25 quarter three report. Mr. Vitas?
Thank you, mayor. So that you know, we are looking at the third quarter report, and there'll be one more quarterly report on the existing strategic plan as we look forward to implementing the new. as we look forward to implementing the new strategic plan on January first. What I will point out, though, is that, looking at the report, you'll know that there are projects that are, you know, in progress. We will continue to report on those as a part of our quarterly reporting until those projects reach completion. Projects that, uh, were on hold, like the comprehensive rezoning, that will happen in accordance with the schedule in the new comprehensive plan, as will any changes possibly to a future municipal code update. But as you know, we placed that project on hold some time ago, and it'll be up to the council if we decide we wanna bring that back. But I think we've done a good job of updating the codes as we go. The only other thing that's on hold, and I think we explored all options on that, was the issue of, uh, food security. And, um, I don't envision, that did not end up in the new comprehensive plan. I would envision that that is on hold permanently. But, uh, in terms of where we're at today, uh, just for purposes of general reporting, let me pull this up. All right, there we go. There are twenty-three goals that are, are still on track and will, uh, will be completed as, as, as we go forward into the next, next calendar year and fiscal year. Uh, nineteen goals reported in the report that were completed. Uh, the three goals I mentioned that were on hold or not started, while they were all, what, the only one that's not started was the zoning, comprehensive rezoning. The other two actually were placed on hold. Um, and there's only two goals that are just running behind schedule. But as you can see, one of our goals from the current report is the, uh, solar farm project. And here we are. Five years later, almost, four years later, getting that approved, uh, as we go forward through the end of the year. So, uh, where there's a will, there's a way. I mean, we don't take, we don't, uh, we don't take hostages as we, as we work on our projects and our programs, so, just happy to report that everything is getting done. And if there's questions, we're here to answer those. If not, we'll file the report, continue.
Thank you. Any comments from the council? I just continue to be thankful that we have multiple ways of reporting out what's getting done to the public. And as he mentioned with the news, and I got some information, that, you know, we're, we're losing news reporters. I think the city has to continue to do a good job or bump it up to really get the information out to the community, because they're only gonna see what's on these awful, awful Facebook pages and groups that are just all about gossip that isn't really on point. In my opinion.
Yeah. The, the only other thing I would like to add is, is that we are going to enhance our, our quarterly reporting, and there'll be even greater levels of detail provided to the council and to public. At the end of this month, on the twenty-eighth, the, uh, the directors, my office and staff will be working together to lay out that new, uh, reporting, uh, system so that there's greater levels of detail and accountability and traceability as to even the funding and, and all of our projects. So, that's coming, uh, when we do the, uh, the next update, which will be, you know, sometime in the first quarter of twenty twenty-six, hard to believe. So, you'll look forward to getting the new report to be more enhanced. The new and enhanced report is forthcoming.
Great, thank you. Anything further? All right, hearing none, we'll call our regular council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please. Mr. Razak, do you have an invocation? Okay. Roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy?
Present.
Messias? Razak? Timian?
Present.
Finch?
Present.
McNeil?
Present.
Castro?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
All right, we have no remote electronic attendance. Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, we move to our consent agenda.
Your honor, I request approval of appointments made during committee of the whole on October twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, and consent agenda item seventeen point one through eighteen point four inclusively.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Roll call, please. Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes.
Okay, so this is our amended motion. So, am I just gonna read it all and then I'll add that sentence at the end? Is that how we're gonna do it? Okay. "So a resolution authorizing the director of utilities with the concurrence of the director of finance and the city administrator to approve change orders for the South Slope wastewater reclamation facility project in a total amount not to exceed three million, four hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, the amount of contingency funding previously budgeted for this project, with ratification by the city council afterward. All change orders above one hundred thousand will come to the city council within thirty days of necessary signatures after the end of every bill."
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Schmidt. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number twenty point two, "A resolution authorizing the city attorney and other city staff to notify DHC LLC that the city will not exercise its right of first refusal to purchase the Washington Square Apartments, 316 Seventeenth Street, Moline, Illinois, and allowing Renew Moline to proceed with its purchase of the property from DHC LLC without interference from the city."
Motion to approve? Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number twenty point three, "A resolution granting a variance to Chapter twenty-eight Streets and Sidewalks of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section twenty-eight dash thirty-two hundred, when required, engineers' general responsibility, temporary certificate of occupancy, variances, subsection A, and Chapter thirty-five, zoning and land development, Section thirty-five dash four-two-one-eight sidewalks, to allow a temporary modification to delay installation of a public sidewalk along Fourteenth Street for the subject property located at three-four-one-eight Fourteenth Street, Moline."
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Timian. Yes, Ms. Discussion, Mr. Timian?
Your honor, I voted against this, but I recognize Alderperson Messias is not present. And if we were to vote this way, we could have a big rigmarole roll and have this take a couple weeks and be right back in the place. So I'm just gonna vote for the variance, just in, in respect for, 'cause, you know, the, the person developing the property and the council's time. So we can just move forward.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries, and that's all I have this evening, your honor.
All right, thank you. What's the matter? Oh, the first reading ordinances? Yep. Okay. I was like, wait, I don't see that. I'll read them straight off the agenda. There we go.
Um, item number twenty-one point one, "An ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the City of Moline, Illinois, for the tax levy year twenty twenty-five, collectible in the year twenty twenty-six, and enacting an ordinance relating to the same subject matter."
Motion to advance the second reading?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Schmidt. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number twenty-one point two, "An ordinance levying a special ad valorem tax within the City of Moline, Illinois, special service area number five of the City of Moline, Illinois."
Motion to advance the second reading? Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number twenty-one point three, "An ordinance levying a special ad valorem tax within the City of Moline, Illinois, special service area number six of the City of Moline, Illinois."
Motion to advance to second reading?
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number twenty-one point four, "An ordinance requesting the county clerk not to extend taxes for the year twenty twenty-five, payable in the year twenty twenty-six, for payment of principal and interest for the general obligation corporate purpose bond, series twenty sixteen, refunding taxable general obligation refunding bonds, series twenty twenty A, general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series twenty twenty-one A, refunding general obligation corporate bonds, series twenty twenty-one B, refunding general obligation corporate bond, series twenty twenty-one D."
Motion to advance the second reading?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number twenty-one point five, "An ordinance amending Chapter twenty-two offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section twenty-two dash one-one-zero-five, tobacco products, tobacco accessories, smoking herbs, and alternative nicotine products, by repealing subsection G in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new subsection G dealing with the same subject matter."
Motion to advance the second reading? Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number twenty-one point six, "An ordinance amending Chapter twenty-two offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Article One in general, by enacting one new Division Nine entitled Private Security Guards."
Motion to advance the second reading? Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number twenty-one point seven, "An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a redevelopment economic incentive agreement between the City of Moline and Illinois Damas Two LLC related to the TIF thirteen Moline Center redevelopment project area as amended."
Motion to advance the second reading? Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?